Good evening. Welcome to the April 25th Garden Grove City Council Meeting. We'll open the meeting. I'd like Madam Clerk to call roll.
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember T. Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Klopfenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kay Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Protan Buie.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Thank you. If I can please hand it over to Kingsley to lead us in the invocation, and then Councilmember Tuha Nguyen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Dear Lord, we ask for your presence this evening as we begin the work entrusted to us by the citizens of this great city of Garden Grove. Restore your blessings on our deliberations that we may have the benefit of your wisdom and integrity in making decisions that affect the lives of those who live and walk in Garden Grove. Amen.
Just place the flag, put your arm over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Oops, sorry. We have the extra members up here because we have the Housing Authority convene, so I'll go ahead and hand it over to Chair Klopfenstein to lead us for the Housing Authority.
Very good. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Beard.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Buie.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Kay Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Solario.
Here.
Vice Chair T. Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Klopfenstein.
Here. Do we have any oral communications for Housing Authority?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move on to Item Two Consent Items. We have Two A, receive and file the Housing Authority's Status Report from March 2017, and Two B, receive and file minutes from the meeting held on March 28, 2017.
So move.
Feel like I'm in jeopardy.
It's not coming up.
Login issue on the end, so I don't know if you want to...
I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Commissioner Beard.
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Buie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Kay Nguyen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Solario.
Yes.
Vice Chair T. Nguyen.
Yes.
And Chair Klopfenstein.
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Items for consideration. Seeing none, we will move on to matters from Chair, Commissioners, and Director. Anyone...
Just want to welcome Commissioner Solario to the board.
Yeah, as do I.
You're looking sharp, and thank you for joining us.
Yeah, I appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Okay, very good. Well, that adjourns the Housing Authority. The next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 23, 2017, at 6:30 here at the Community Meeting Center.
Thank you, and we will reconvene City Council, and we'll go on to Community Spotlight. This is recognition of 2017 Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year, Chuck Lake and Vicky Hansen.
All right. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing two outstanding members of the community for their exceptional efforts and sustained contributions to Garden Grove. They are the 2017 Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Man and Woman of the Year. Would Charles Lake and Vicky Hansen please come forward? Each year, the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce selects two dedicated service-oriented individuals who consistently demonstrate community pride through volunteer efforts. It is the city's privilege to honor these two outstanding residents. We will begin with Man of the Year, Chuck Lake. Chuck, a longtime resident, is a member of the Garden Grove Historical Society. He served as President of the Garden Grove Host Lions Club and was a recipient of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Women's Division Silver Spoon Award for his service to the Garden Grove High School Alumni Association and the Garden Grove Historical Society. Chuck's father, H. Lewis Lake, was the Garden Grove's first mayor, and the senior senator of Garden Grove was named in his father's honor to recognize his commitment to the Garden Grove community. Next, we have our Woman of the Year, Vicky Hansen. Vicky is also a longtime resident of Garden Grove. She is currently a board member of the Lamp lighter Guild, where she has also previously served as President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. Vicky is also on the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association Board and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Women's Division. She was recipient of the Silver Spoon Award for her service to the Children's Hospital of Orange County. Vicky received an honorary service award and the Golden Oak Service Award from the California State PTA. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Chuck Lake and Vicky Hansen with a gift in recognition of their selection as 2017 Garden Grove Man and Garden Grove Woman of the Year Award. The city congratulates both of you for this well-deserved achievement and comments your noble efforts in bringing out the best in our Garden Grove community. Congratulations.
Thank you. We have a few things we would like to present to you, so if you want to come join me, and we'll go, come on down. Chris Kraus.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And let's take a peek at what we've got going on here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all of this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we can, yeah, we'll group in here and we'll take some photos, and then if you guys want to say a few words...
Should we wrap these in our mouths?
Yeah, please. Yeah, that would be great.
All right, guys. Picture right here. One, two, and three, and one more. One, two, and three. Perfect. Thank you.
Well, I wasn't expecting to speak, but I just want to say thank you. Thank you first to the chamber, the City of Garden Grove, and to all the council members and Mayor Jones. I feel honored and privileged to live in this city, which has so many diverse and unique opportunities for people to be able to serve. So it's my pleasure to be able to do that, and I have to give a shout out to my husband and my son because they're so very, very supportive of all that I do. So thank you. Thanks to all my friends that came tonight, too.
I, too, want to express my thanks to the chamber as well as to the city. My roots to this city go back to 1910 when my grandparents came here. So I've got a lot of family history here, and I really feel like I would, I'd like to give service to this community because of that. So again, thank you all, and I want to say thank you to my wife Julie over there who also supports me all the time. So again, thank you, everybody.
Thanks and congratulations to both of you. We'll now move on to oral communications. I only have two cards. Looks like I'm getting a third, and maybe a fourth. Okay, so I've got four cards. Starting with Celia Padilla.
Good evening. As stated, my name is Celia Padilla, and I have been a resident here, my family and I, for 20 years. We've really enjoyed this community, and I also worked for the school district, which I was completely impressed, not only as my children attended, but also as a employee. But the thing that I want to address today is, as a resident of 20 years, my home has been a target of graffiti. I live on a corner lot, and the side of the house, we have a very lengthy, long, white picket fence, a white fence. And through the years, we have communicated and called the graffiti department so they can come out and remove the graffiti, which they have done so throughout the years. However, these past few months, as the graffiti continued, we have called numerous times to the graffiti department to remove the graffiti. This time, I don't know for what reason, their response has been lacking. They have always, in times past, have responded very quickly, you know, in a matter of days, depending on holidays or weekends. This time, we've called two weeks, a week and a half, and still no response. My husband has called even the city manager and let him know what has happened. Well, about a month and a half ago, somebody graffitied our entire fence, the whole entire length of the fence. The city came out, after numerous calls, they finally came out and they painted, mind you, our fence is white, and in the past, they've always painted it white to match the color. Well, needless to say, they did not. And they painted the whole length of the fence to cover the graffiti a different color, a tone color. Well, we had asked if they can come out and, you know, paint it white, as they have done so in the past, and no problem, they have done so. Well, we did not receive any responses. Again, my husband called, the department called city manager. Finally, somebody, I believe the supervisor for that department, I believe he said her name is Shirley, something to that effect, came and dropped off a bucket of paint. Now, for us to paint, okay? Now, what got me was my son, who has horrible, horrible work hours, was asleep, answered the door, because she came knocking at the door, unbeknownst to him, did not know, any idea what was going on. She comes to the door with an attitude and says, "Here's the paint, and, and we don't paint. We don't, we don't, we don't, you have to do the painting yourself. We don't do that for you." And she said that with an attitude. My husband and I were very, very livid. My son did not deserve that kind of treatment or behavior from a supervisor from that department. Now, this last time, they graffitied our wall again. It took them a week and a half to respond. I have a neighbor down the street, also a corner lot, who coincidentally has the same house number as I do. Their fence was also, they have a block wall, they have been also targeted at graffiti. This last weekend, Friday, in fact, Friday, I was driving up the street, their wall was completely covered. The city came in and they took care of it. I drove up to mine, the tag was still there. I was livid. Why were we overpassed? And now, they have to, in order to get to my house, they have to pass by my house, they have to pass by to get to my neighbors, they have to drive by mine, because I'm on a corner lot of a main street. I don't know if you know Central and Cypress, it's very, you know, it's a lot of traffic going on there. But I would ask if somebody can look into that, find out for a quicker response, and also, I would ask, number two, for more police patrol. We need more police patrol in that area. Desperately needed. It's desperately needed, but thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out. We have your card, but we don't have your phone number on here. Otherwise, I would ask someone to follow up.
I will, and I would greatly appreciate if somebody can get ahold of that department, and I don't know what happened, but they used to be very, very good in responding.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry you had to come out.
And I can give the number?
Yeah. Anne Accordino.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm here to ask you to look into the ongoing drag racing on Euclid. Lamson to Chapman. It is going to be, there's going to, something horrible's going to happen. We have enough accidents, they're just going north on Lamson. So, anyway, it's the drag racing every evening, especially weekends. And there's many places from Lamson north on the right side for police cars to sit. Sit there for a while, you'll get them. Most cars are speeding anyway, over 40 miles an hour. I'd like to see Lamson turn into a 35 mile an hour, just to see, maybe even put another light in some place or a stop sign. Also, I'd like to address the tailpipe noise. Pipes, like we used to have when we were kids, only these are terrible. There's even one that has pipes on his gray pickup, and then in the bed of his truck, he literally has a stainless steel pipe this big around, and it spews black smoke. So I don't know if he's running diesel or not, but that's what's going on. And that's actually all I have to say. If you look into it...
Is this late at night, or when does this typically occur that you hear the...
Actually, even if there's no traffic, and they're, like, the first two cars rolling through Lamson, they're on it. They don't care what time of the day, but it's usually night, and especially weekends. Somebody could be walking their dog and they lose control. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. I owe an apology to Councilmember Kim Nguyen, Councilmember Tuha Nguyen, and Councilmember Fat Buie. Last council meeting, I was talking about the history of our country and the battles that our troops have fought. Now, I neglected to mention three important battles. I thought of them earlier, but I forgot to include them when I wrote down my list. The Battle of the Itrang Valley, Tet, and the Battle of Way. So, again, I apologize for not mentioning those, and I apologize to all of our veterans of Vietnam. Years ago, when we had just a community of Garden Grove, our main thoroughfare went from Chapman down through the area that is now Main Street, and continued on down through what is now the Costco parking area and connected with Century. That was the main thoroughfare through Garden Grove. Well, later, the route was changed. Euclid became the main thoroughfare, and Main Street was just cut off from the main traffic flow. But that's all right. Main Street is not a place where you would want to just travel through. It's a place you want to stop and visit. When the people who own businesses and buildings on Main Street decided that they needed to make sure that they would have plenty of parking, they pooled their money, and they bought several properties in the city for the purpose of parking. That was the Parking Commission, which, when the city incorporated, was abolished, and all those properties magically became part of the city. The most recent development has been that they are negotiating to sell the last really important parking lot to the west of Main Street. Now, when the Sacramento government, in all of its wisdom, did its money grab and closed down all the redevelopment agencies, the money that was part of the redevelopment agency and the properties, including that parking lot, somehow managed to end up with the Housing Authority. Now, I don't know, I know that governments work in mysterious ways, but the time has come for the city to step forward and do what's right for our community, find a way to keep that parking lot, not just for Main Street, but for all of our events that we have, the Strawberry Festival, and now we're having musical events at the Village Green. Where are people going to park if we turn that parking lot into housing? Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, members and residents of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibbs, and I'm pleased to be here. As a longtime graduate, a longtime resident of Garden Grove and an honors graduate from Pacifica High School, I then went on to Cal State Long Beach and became a teacher, and graduated with honors as well from Cal State University of Long Beach. So it is with pleasure that I come to you today and to the residents on something positive, which is the upcoming graduates reception at the next, prior to the next council meeting, starting at 4:30 on May the 9. And I'm very pleased, as a teacher and educator, I've worked for Garden Grove Unified for 17 years to be one of the sponsors of this event. And so I'm very grateful that our city makes education a priority in recognizing our college graduates and get them off to a good start. This will be the fifth annual one, and I want to share a message that I like to share with graduates, or anyone actually, and it's my definition of success. So I'll be sharing this probably at the next council meeting with the graduates and at the reception. Success, as I prefer to define it, is devoting and utilizing your career, talents, and abilities, helping others and oneself achieve much-needed positive change for a better future nation and world. So I tell my students, it's not about how much money you make or how much fame you get. It's what are you doing, and what are you going to do as a career, spending eight hours a day, five days a week, 50 weeks a year times 40 years, or approximately 80,000 work hours. What are you going to devote your time and talent and resources as a career to do to help make the world and the community a better place? So it's not about necessarily making money. We do have to pay bills, but my message to the graduates and to the citizens of Garden Grove is that dedicate your life and career to help making the world a better place. That's what it's about. And in that regard, I'm reminded, and I apologize for not making the last council meeting, but 50 years ago, almost to the day, back on April the 4th, 1967, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. gave a speech one year prior to his assassination called "Beyond Vietnam." And that seven-page speech, which is here, I encourage people to Google it and read it, called "Beyond Vietnam," calling on our nation and our citizens to work for peace and justice. So I want to thank you very much, as a, thank the city and the staff who have been working on this, Kim Hoy and her staff, Anna Polito, for putting this wonderful event together for May the 9, and I encourage anyone who could go to make it. I'm the only individual sponsor this year, and I want to encourage our citizens to, next year, join me, and so we have more sponsors. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes oral communications. So we'll recess, and we'll go on to other agencies. I'll do successor, and then thereafter, I'll hand it over to President Beard to do sanitary district thereafter. So I will convene the successor agency meeting. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member O'Neil.
Here.
Member T. Nguyen.
Here.
Here.
Member Buoi?
Yeah.
Member Clovenstein?
Here.
Member Kay Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously. We'll move on to consign items, just receive and file the minutes from April 11th, and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call to vote.
It's not popping up for you.
On Ben?
No?
Oh. I gotta go to that thing, huh?
Are we going? I feel your pain.
Sorry.
Okay.
We're good.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Sorry.
Any matters from successor agency members? If none, we will adjourn to sanitary district.
With that, if you could go to our sanitary district.
You ready?
Okay, with that, I'll convene the sanitary district meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Member Buoi?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Clovenstein?
Here.
Member Kay Nguyen?
Here.
Member T. Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here. Item number one, oral communications, we've already covered that. Item number two is the consent items. There's 2A, adoption of a resolution declaring surplus property located at 12782 Bailey Street, Garden Grove. Item 2B, receive and file the minutes.
Move it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. No public hearings, no items for consideration. Any matters from the board? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn to May 23rd, 2017.
Thank you. Back to the city council agenda, we'll go to consent items. I recommended that 3A through 3F be acted on simultan, or concurrently, unless anyone would like to pull any of those.
Do I have a motion?
Move the motion.
Wait.
Call to vote.
We did have a gentleman, Mr. Summers, he just left off this oral communications card. He wanted to speak on item 3A, which is the carry ambulance contract.
Which was a consent item, so he should have spoken under oral?
Actually, no, I'm sorry, 3B. He just.
Yeah, 3B, yeah.
3B, yeah. He should have, but I'm just letting you know. He just dropped this off.
Okay.
So he just dropped off and left?
Open the public hearing and give up?
It's not a public hearing.
This would have been under oral.
Yeah, it would, let's, okay, we, where are we at? Did we already act on?
We did. We acted on consent and approved it, yeah.
Who is it? Would you still like to speak, whoever it is?
Not if it's already approved.
Yeah. Yeah, we've already acted on the consent items. Okay, so we will move on to item four, public hearings, 4A. And this is approval of fiscal year 2017-18 action plan for HUD funds.
Yes, Ms. Nadal Watkins is here to give the staff report.
Good evening, council. The item I have before you is the draft 2017-18 action plan for the use of HUD funds. As a recipient of HUD funds, federal law requires that all jurisdictions who receive Community Development Block grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solution Grant Funds prepare an annual action plan. This action plan specifically identifies how these three types of funds will be allocated to the priority objectives that were identified in our consolidated plan, five-year consolidated plan. During the program year, an estimated 3.9 million in HUD funds will be available. This includes 1.4 million in carryover funds from prior years, and 2.5 million in new funds. These funding levels are based on projected allocation from HUD. Funding levels will be adjusted once the exact allocations have been determined by HUD. During fiscal year 1718, HUD funds will address affordable housing improvement and rehabilitation, public services, emergency shelter services, neighborhood improvement, and economic development. Staff's funding recommendations for public services and emergency services are for the maximum amount available in each category. We are currently in the public review and comment period for the action plan, which became available for public review and comment March 24th, and will continue until the conclusion of the public hearing. On April 3rd, the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission held a public hearing to receive comments on the draft action plan, a summary of all the comments received thus far included in the draft action plan. Tonight, you are asked to conduct a public hearing to hear and consider public comments, review staff's funding recommendation, and recommend transmission of the draft action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nadal. Any questions of staff this time? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item, so we'll open a public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Comments or a motion? I'd be happy to make a.
Yeah, motion to approve the annual, the housing plan. Second.
Call to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to matters from council members and city manager. Pushcart?
Well, since you mentioned it. We had a great event this last Saturday at West Garden Grove. It was on Springdale, and it was the PAC 271 organized, all the Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, excuse me, from, who pushed their little pushcars down Springdale, the only known hill, man-made hill in Garden Grove. So it was a wonderful event. I thank the council members for coming out. I think all the, all the scouts had a good time, all the audience, all the parents, and so it's a great event, and thanks, thanks to the city for sponsoring that once again.
Yeah, the pushcart derby, it was a great day. It was a great weather, all the kids had fun. I don't think anybody got hurt. Just a couple items, I know that this weekend, I believe, the St. Columban Festival is going on, so come out, I think Friday, Saturday, Sunday, to St. Columban's with your family and have a good time. I also wanted to mention Mr. Debs, mention the graduate reception. My daughter was benefited in that in 2012, so I would recommend people be sponsors of that and, and get involved in that. And let's see, Janet, Senator Janet Nguyen had a Orange County Health Fair at the Coastline Community College, right here across the street from City Hall. Anybody in the, I think they're doing another one in October, so, you know, come out and get some free services. If you don't have health insurance, it's a good time. You get seen and treated right there on the spot, but you gotta get there early in the morning to get in line. So that's all I have.
Thank you. To Ha Nguyen?
Just wanted to mention that this, this month is a considered the Black April commemorations, and upcoming this weekend, we're gonna have the Black April commemorations in Lewis I gone, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim?
I just wanted to mention that I've been hearing a lot of complaints from residents regarding graffiti. One, the one just spoken about, I believe this is District 4, and I know that I got one in District 6, on the area between Fairview and Harbor on Trask, because I just wanted to make sure that we followed up with those residents regarding those issues.
I'd just like to speak about the vector control meeting that was on April 20th at 3:00 PM, if anybody would like to attend those meetings. It was a very important one. We discussed aerial spraying, and we discussed who would have the right to vote on that, should it become something we have to look at for the summer. There were several different options on the table. In the end, the full trustee board of 35 will vote this summer, should aerial spraying come to the table or be needed. I don't know if anybody else is having issues with mosquitoes on their property, but I am hearing from a lot of people that they're out there and they're getting bit, so this is a really good time to start taking preventative measures and to protect yourself. So making sure your screens are fitted securely to your windows, making sure that you're dumping and draining standing water on your property, just making sure that you're preparing yourself and getting into good habits as we lead up to the hotter summer months, which is usually when mosquito activity is at its highest. I'm trying to do everything that I can to coordinate with the city and with vector control to make sure we're communicating to the public the risk of West Nile virus and the risk that some of these mosquitoes can potentially have on the public. I appreciate Deputy City Attorney Maria Stipe for helping me get the information on the table out front here of the meeting, and I hope to have this information out for every council meeting as we go through the summer. It's very informative, talks about mosquitoes, talks about ways to protect yourself and your family, and gives you information if you need to call vector control for an issue. And obviously, social media, and there'll be other outlets to, to get that information out, and more updates to follow.
Congratulations, Maria, on becoming an attorney.
Deputy, yeah. So I don't know what I.
Deputy City Manager.
Deputy City Manager, there you go.
Mayor Pro Tembui.
Yes, I would like to echo on what Councilwoman Clovenstein have mentioned. You know, we have West Nile virus, and now this year, we start to have Zika virus, and it is a major threat to, you know, public health. Now, the vector control board have a very tough battle to, to wait. On one hand, it is the potential spread of a very serious disease that can kill people. And then on the other hand, the spraying to control the mosquito might pose, you know, a great risk to, to the health of the general publics. So how do we wait that is, is not an easy, you know, jobs. And I was at, last Thursday, vector control board meetings, and I can, I experienced firsthand how tough a job it is for our representative to, to be there representing the resident of Garden Grove. It's not an easy atmosphere to, to work, work in, and so I would like to commend a really great job that Councilmember Clovenstein have, have done for that. I was there for only, say, 45 minutes, as opposed to the two-hour-long meeting that she had to be there, and already I feel very stressed, stressed out by that. Anyway, it is very important that we spread the word out to our resident that we need to dump the water in the garden pot. Any standing water in our garden, in whatever form, should be clear, because if we fail to do that, the, you know, you know, the Z-borne mosquito will, will grow, and, and then we will be faced with the possibility of, of spraying, which none of us want to, to endure. And so, so I would like to echo that, that message. On the second things, I would like to echo what Councilmember Thu Ha Nguyen have mentioned. This Sunday is April 30th, and to many Vietnamese refugee, political refugee, is a big deal. Many of us have parished under sea when we try to escape, you know, the communist and, and be allowed to have freedom in this great country. And many more are still being oppressed by a very brutal government in communist Vietnam. And so this, this Sunday, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Vietnam World Memorial in, in Westminster, we will have a commemoration, and I would like to extend the invitation to, you know, the mayor and council members, as well as all resident of Garden Grove, to come and remember the Black April with us. Thank you.
Thank you. So in anticipation of this being a relatively short meeting, I wrote a little thesis on my vision for the future of the city I'd like to share with you, so it'll only take about 90 minutes or so, if you'll just bear with me.
Is that your way to keep us here until 9:00 PM or midnight?
Just kidding. I would just like to say, draw attention that we're planning on going dark for two meetings in the summer due to various council members' travel schedules. So July 11th and August 8th will be dark. And then also, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of longtime resident and community person Tom England, who is survived by his wife Marge England. So we all just want to reach out our condolences to Marge and the family for her loss. And with that, I'll conclude. I'll ask our city manager if he has anything he would like to add.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple things. Thank you for the comments about graffiti. We will follow up both at the location Fairview and Harbor at Trask, I believe. Councilmember Nguyen said, along with Ms. Padia, who talked to us about her property at Central and Cypress, so we will check both of those out. And while I'm talking about that, I would encourage, obviously, you know, please call our graffiti hotline, but I'd also remind people that they can download the cities of City of Garden Grove app and log in locations where they see graffiti. That actually goes right to the Public Works staff and goes right on to their work order list, so that's a good way for people to follow up. And then finally, I think I would just mention April 30th in the afternoon, I think is, a lot of people will remember the Silver Spoon Awards, that I think the Garden Grove Chamber sponsors. That's from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at Great Wolf Lodge, and if you need more information, I'm sure you can call the Chamber, and then after that, from 6:00 to 9:00, you can go to the Black April ceremony. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, anything to report, or anything, comments to make about our closed session or nothing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. No, there is no reportable action out of closed session tonight.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Time is it? Time is it?[1332.83]